Scarborough Board of Education Workshop, today is Thursday, February 27th. May I have the attendance, please?
Yes, Ms. Dergan.
Here.
Ms. G- Mrs. Githos?
Here.
Dr. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Calzalonis. Ms. Layton?
She's traveling.
Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
And Mr. Bennett.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Obviously, I am standing in for Leanne as chair tonight because unfortunately she is homesick. At this point, I'm going to turn the workshop over to Sandy and our professional staff, and my one request is that you please introduce yourself for people watching who may not know who everybody is.
So, quick, Sandy Prince, and we're here tonight to talk about the proposed calendar that we will be hopefully adopting. I've asked both principals from the elementary schools to be here. A lot of the calendar, the changes that took place last year really added value to kindergarten registration and screening, and I thought it would be good for both principals to talk about that and how it went and how it correlated with the calendar, and then if we have more questions about the calendar, we can take it from there. So, other than that, we can turn our work to the principals and have them introduce themselves, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
I'm Jessica Steele, principal of Pleasant House School.
I'm Kelly Martin, principal at Woodpoint.
Would you guys like us to just chat about what the process was like and the results? So, last year was the first time, I think, that kindergartens started a little bit later. And we knew that we had some problems and, well, we posed problems that we needed to solve. We are required mandated by federal, uh, state law and federal law under child find, and so that means that all students needs, we need to identify students who may have disabilities to see if they may be eligible for special education services upon kindergarten entry. And so, our kindergarten screening process helps us to do that, and Kelly can speak to the history of the screening process in Scarborough.
Yeah, we've done it a little bit differently over the years. A few years back, we were doing it all in March, in a week. During March, we were doing registration and screening, and that was very staff intensive, where we had a lot of substitute, substitutes in place so that our secretaries, occupational therapists, teachers, ed techs, they were all involved. We did it at Wentworth. And, you know, it was, it was an okay process, but again, it costs a lot of money, and it was really staff intensive, and staff weren't really getting the eyes on kids that we wanted them to, and we weren't getting all kids screened during that window of time. So then, we changed things a little bit, and we tried to screen kids during kinder camp because that was really popular, and so we moved it to that window, hoping a little bit closer to the beginning of the school year would work, and that wasn't successful just because of, staff availability and the demands of the kinder camp program, and it just, we, again, we weren't able to get the number of kids that we wanted to get screened within that timeframe. So, last year, we talked about doing it at the beginning of the school year, which is allowable through state statute to reduce the kindergarten year by up to five days for purposes of screening. So, we looked at, you know, what's the minimum amount of days that we would really need to do that to accommodate the number of kids that we anticipate coming in. And so, we did that, came up with a plan.
Yeah, and what's different about kindergarten versus first and second grade is that our kindergarten teachers, like we said, are do, are having to do the mandatory child find screening. So, they're using additional assessments, which take additional time. So, while first and second grade may be able to complete their assessment process in that twenty-ish minute window on the two days that are allotted, our kindergarten teachers are not, because it takes around forty-five minutes or more for them to do everything that's required. So, in order to get all, as our enrollment increases and the number of kindergarteners we're seeing come through the doors, we needed to make sure that we had time for the kindergarten teachers to be able to see all of the kids that are coming through. So, adding up all of the time requirements took us to that two-day mark, additional two days that we would need for kindergarten teachers to be able to lay eyes and do all the screenings that are required of them. We, we not, we didn't just make this decision unilaterally. This was a conversation that we had with our kindergarten teachers. We actually surveyed neighboring districts to see what everyone else was doing in terms of kindergarten screening and start dates, and we, we put a proposal together based on all of that data to the district office, superintendent, et cetera, and decided that two days could be sufficient to get done what we needed to get done.
Two additional days?
From what was prior. So, they already had two days, and so, we needed two more days with kinder, just for kindergarten, September one to, because it's K one to. We've seen some great results. This year, our staff, our teachers report that because the screening information was timely for them, that they were actually able to provide instruction that was responsive to where their kids were. Before that, they may have had results back in March, or they had it in early June, but because everything was done within a short window of time, they could plan instructionally better for their classrooms. And I think that the most important thing that we, was something we feel very strongly about, and I think any principal that you talk to will say that making sure, at this age group, is that making sure that your classrooms are balanced is really important. And so, for us, that means that we have diversity in our classrooms, that we're not too heavy in need in any one area in our rooms, that we have a balance of kids, so that teachers feel like they can serve all students' needs to the best of their ability. And being able to have this time and do that really helped us to achieve that goal.
Yeah, and I think last year was the first year we were really able to use screening information for placement, which, you know, was, was the goal really, especially when we moved things to the summer. We were really hopeful we'd be able to use that information for placement, and it just didn't work out. So, we were really dedicated this, this past year, and we had a tight timeline of how we were gonna do that and how we were gonna inform parents, but it worked. And we had all the information in terms of screening information and information from preschool surveys, and we had parent surveys. We really had all that information at our fingertips, as well as, you know, sitting down with teachers and talking about anecdotal information that they had seen from kids during the screening and getting their input about, you know, what they thought and what kids would work well together, and some information from kinder camp and those notes. So, we really had a lot more information than we've ever had about kids going into kindergarten, which is really always the big unknown for placement. And so, I think we really probably had the best placement outcomes that we've ever had in, in my time working here, placing kindergartners. So, it was really successful.
And I haven't been here that long, but that's what the kindergarten teachers have said back to us, is that they're really grateful that they had that time and that they had all that information, and that they really felt this year that their classes matched up with, you know, what they would hope in terms of being able to serve all kids' needs. So, it was valuable. You guys have any questions to ask?
I can actually, no, her present.
I don't really have a question, but I just have, like, I get a, um, a lot of feedback about that week being really difficult for, for families. And if they, for example, use a older, need to use an older child to help out, and then the older kids are in, in school and, and the K-two kids are getting, are screened only by appointment, so they're home, that, that's hard. And then, so, if, if we, I don't know if that's necessarily a you question or a question to the group, and then the other issue that I've heard is that, just wondering whether it makes sense to use that week because they're not, although they're using it more fully this year, it looks like. But, but, you know, with that Friday off and then the Monday off, it, I think the, the question is, does it make sense, or is there a way to do it better so that the families can utilize that time? And we're here for schools, I get that. So, so, but is there, is there an alternative? I guess that's my question.
I think, I mean, I, we like having, you know, kind of a short week before a full week. It really gets, gives kids just kind of that jump start into, okay, now we're back in school. I mean, they've been gone, main has long, along the summer period, so there, that, that is kind of like a transition into the real deal, if you will. So, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, it's really, however, however the calendar works out is how we work with it. But we do use that short week as opportunities to re-enter kids into school at this age. I mean, they have been gone a long time, so it's kind of a, you know, I know at high school, they probably hit the ground running with, you know, syllabus and all of that kind of stuff, but we're, we're using it as some transition time, which is really helpful for kids as they come back into, to school.
I think that the flip side of that transition time is the difficulty that I have, I mean, so I have the same, I've heard the same feedback, and I have personal experience having kids go for one day at school, and I think that it's really tricky to ask a really little kid to go to school for one day and then have a four-day weekend. I think if it was maybe just a regular weekend, it wouldn't be as much of a problem. But I, and I understand what you're saying about like a shorter week, but one day is, I, I, I've said this for two years, I have such a problem with it. So, I, I'm just wondering, like, is there any way that, I mean, so they have one day, like, why wouldn't you just start them on the eighth with everybody else?
You mean the first and second graders?
Come on, first and second.
Yeah. Or, or move it back a day, I mean, but then you're taking away one of their appointment days, I guess. I, I just, I, I think Alicia's point is a good one, and like I said, I've had a lot of feedback about this, and that would still be a shorter week. I don't know, what, I just, that's just my opinion. I just, it's just really hard for a little kid to go to school for one day, and you, because you get them all geared up, and I, and I think it is also hard for the parents, too, to try and work around.
With the enrollment that we have, there's no way we could shorten the amount of screening days, so I guess we could look at adding an additional screening day?
If we were to do that, Hillary, we'd be below, we'd be below a hundred and seventy-five days for those students, right? Because it's a hundred and seventy-seven overall, and they already missed the first and second, so that brings them down to one seventy-five. I'm doing the math right?
Well, is the first and second even count?
It's still a day, isn't it?
It's still, I think it's still a day.
The percentage of the districts have to, of the district has to go to school that day.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I think you could still hold first and second grade, but enough of the kids would be in school that it would still count as a day, so I don't think we're bumping up against that statute.
I do remember asking about that last year, though, too, because I don't think, I think we do count September first on this. I'm just looking at this, do you want to put it on the screen? So, I'm just looking, if you look at the, the, no, the next one. Yeah, so here it just shows like when each kid is gonna go to school. Like, I think, are we counting September first as a school day?
In our, in our proposed calendar, we are.
We are.
As we're counting them in our quarters, yes.
Everything past the first.
Okay, so that doesn't really make sense to me either, because not very much of the district is going to school that day.
Well, they're being screened.
Well, right, but fourth, fifth, seventh, eighth, tenth, eleventh, fifteenth, twelfth, thirteenth.
They're in, they're in transition activities, so, I mean. Yeah, we made that shift probably four or five years ago, when, in past, since I've been here, ninth grade always had this freshman day. But none of the other schools had it, and so, there was a lot of discussion about transitioning from the small K-two schools to the third grade, so we decided on three, six, nine step-up day, where the entire staff and the students could acclimate to the buildings.
Yeah, I love that. I love that day, and I think it's really valuable. I'm just.
To count as a school day.
To count as a school day, I don't know.
So, I guess that's how, you know, we would say September third would be for first and second as that transition day, like three, six, and nine have, but.
True.
It's, it's just such a mess for people to manage, I think, for planning, and, and then you hear, well, if we have to take it off anyways, at least, you know, it'd be nice if we could do something, and they can't really do that, and so, I'm, you know, I'm empathetic towards that, and just wonder if we could brainstorm a, a, a way to, to make it a little bit more palatable, and if not, then not, but it's just something that I hear and wanna, wanna take seriously for them.
That, that's all I'm saying, too. And I just want to be clear, like, I, I think that, that improvements that you've made to the screening process for kindergarteners are really important, and I can see, I mean, I used to teach kindergarten, I can see that if you, you know, if you screen a kid in March, they're not the same kid when you get them in September. So, to me, that makes the most amount of sense for, it, it gives the most benefit to the student and the teacher. And the fact that you've been able to work that into the scheduling and make it work, I think, is, is great. I don't want, I, I think that you guys made a really good choice, and I think that coming back now and saying, you know, and being able to look at it, having done it a year, and saying, okay, well, this definitely works the best that we've done so far, I, I don't, you don't need to convince me. I, I, I think that's great. I just, I mean, and, and it is, oh, and I get that it is hard for families anytime you have like an appointment day, right, where you, you're, you're basically in school for twelve, thirty minutes, and your parent has to bring you. But, like I said, my biggest, my biggest problem is sending kids to school for one day before a four-day weekend. So, you know, we don't do it with any other students. It's not like they're going as a step-up day, I mean, they, they've been in that school. There's two, two out of three grades. So, I just would like to brainstorm.
So, are you suggesting running appointments all three days? So, the schools, that the students don't, grades one and two don't go to school on the third?
Well, I personally would prefer that over having one day of school before a four-day weekend. But, that's just me.
I mean, give the teachers one more time.
I happen to love that one day of school.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm the only.
Not only do my kids need ease back in, I need to ease back in, but I, I've heard that feedback, too, that that one day is a year.
I can go either way, and I'm, I really, I think it's interesting that, you know, and I've heard that feedback, too, and to echo Hillary's point about how much improved the screening is, it, I didn't understand why the screening process had changed, having older kids in the district and then finding out there was a new screening process. I think it puts families on edge a little bit to not know who the kindergarten teacher, like that uncertainty of not knowing who your kindergarten teacher is. But once it was explained to me, like, the benefits of doing that screening so much later, plus I'm someone who didn't send my kids to kinder camp, so, like, hi, you get to meet my kid in March, and then you don't see them again until September, that, I mean, it's a no-brainer for me, how that, how much of an improved process that is. And so, once I heard that, I said, okay, so the trade-off is, I won't, I'll, I'll have that kindergarten teacher uncertainty, but, you know, the pros significantly outweigh the cons, and I certainly don't think that's a hard sell. It's just a communication point. You know, we just need to make sure that the parents understand, and the more years we do it, you know, everybody kind of gains that, exactly, gains that experience. In terms of the sending kids to school just Thursday, I see both, I think I have kids who benefit from it, and I think I have kids who would rather not do it, so I can see it both ways. It's hard to rationalize eliminating a day of instruction, even if it's a transition day for first graders, is better for them than being there for one day. Say that again, please? In other words, the positives for the students, and I understand that it's a disruption for the parents, but the positives for the students is that it is a transition day. And while there are four days in between the time in which they come back, they do meet their teacher and their friends in their classrooms, and they orient to school and the processes, and have a heads-up, so it's a high-energy day for them. Eliminating that and saying, no day of school is better than a day of school, is hard to rationalize. Because it, for the students, I think that, and the reason why we have that is to allow them that day to orient, transition, get used to riding a bus again, and start to rebuild that stamina of that full day.
So, my experience with that is. As a, I mean, they're gonna have that day, no matter what day, well, no matter what day it is, the first day of school is gonna look the same, whether it's September third or September eighth, because obviously, they're transitioning into a new school. But the, the benefit that I see from a child's perspective is that if you do all that on Tuesday, you get to wake up again and do it again the next day instead of going home for four days. I mean, it's a whole thing, you know, you, you start getting your kids to bed early, and then, and it, it just, from a, I'm, and I understand that it's a disruption for parents, but that's actually not my problem with it. My problem with it is that I think that it's disruptive to students.
Yeah, I agree with that. I feel like just go, like, if going for like one or two days, you're not in like the school mindset yet, and I think that first day is so important that by, you know, after Labor Day weekend, it's like you have to kick it into gear and get in the school mindset, and I feel like that would make that first day like much more productive rather than just going to school for a day and still being kind of in like summer mode.
And I completely understand your point about losing an instructional day. I'd be happy to add it on at the end. I mean, I would rather end on the seventeenth or eighteenth.
You mean, have the students in grade one and two go an extra day?
No, all of them.
But everybody else, so you're saying grades one through twelve should not start the third? You're saying move everybody's first day to September eighth?
No, not necessarily, but I mean, so September first, we're counting as a day of school, even though, like, I mean, to be honest, half the district isn't going to school.
Less than half. School is a session.
Right, okay, so I get that, but, but if we're being, if we're talking about instructional days, half the kids aren't getting it anyway. So, in my mind, to count that as a hu, as a hundred and seventy-seventh day doesn't make sense. Like, I'd rather put another day on so that, okay, yeah, the, the kids in grades three, six, and nine have a hundred and seventy-eight days.
But keep in mind that.
But then the rest of the kids have a hundred and seventy-seven and a hundred and seventy-six. Yeah, I know, I get, I get that. It's an extra day.
And we can only have so many days different than the bulk program, like, that's another limiting. Yeah, we're right up against that usually.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'd like to know what that, what that schedule is.
I'm looking at calendars as, as we're talking, and it, it seems like, so far, I've only looked at a couple, but it just seems like we're sort of a little different than other people in terms of when we start.
So, um, to speak to how we have to compare to, like, there are some partner districts that we have, right? So, Wyndham, Gorham, Sad Six and Westbrook, for the purposes of vocational programming, we have to caucus together and develop our calendars jointly, and by law, we cannot be off five days or more, because that would interrupt that programming. And so, currently, the way our schedule is, we have three uncommon days with, with them.
And we can only have five, right?
So, if you look at Wyndham, Wyndham had their first day of school September third this year, using the school.
What day of the week is that, though?
Yeah, I, I can tell you what our partner districts are doing.
Oh, that would be great.
Yep, so, for example, the start dates for students, and again, I, you know, the notes that I have don't speak to specific grades, it just speaks to overall. So, RSU fourteen is starting on September first for students. Gorham is starting on August thirty-first for students. Scarborough is scheduled to start on September first. Sad Six is scheduled to start for September second. Sad Six is scheduled to start for September second. And, um, and so that is the start dates. And then there's also the other thing that we have to take into account is we all have different numbers of contractual days. So some of our partner districts go a hundred and seventy five days and some go a hundred and seventy seven days like we do.
And what's the statutory mandate, one seventy five?
One seventy five. But, you know, but again, the way in which we have the one seventy seven does work to our advantage, you know, for things that happen. So for example, this year, you know, Wentworth closed for two days because of, uh, you know, an emergency. We don't have to worry about those students making up those days because that, you know, one seventy seven minus two, we're still at the one seventy five.
Can I ask a question about, and this is probably just my not knowing, but September first and second, you have, I I know very well about kindergarten screening, but can someone tell you about the one and two? Why do we have two days for grade one and two screening as well?
We used to have one day, um, and for similar purposes, just to kind of meet and greet students and do the, do kind of, um, screenings to kind of get the baseline level for the beginning of the year. And as class sizes changed over time, it just became, those schedules got too packed. So, um, we moved it to two days at some point. I can't remember how many years.
Yeah, so are we screening, are we, what screening are they doing during those first two days?
We're doing, um, literacy and math.
Yeah, we're doing math and literacy local assessments. So that's asked of teachers, um, at the beginning of the year.
When it was one day, it was more meet and greet.
Right.
But they wanted to complete the screening that they usually end up folding in over the course of a week or two.
Which is difficult.
So they now go by appointment in order to do that screening in the first two days, so that instruction can start right from there.
Okay.
And it gives the teacher, it gives the teacher a half an hour with each student individually, individually for those first two days.
It makes sense.
Individually.
Parents update paperwork.
Yeah.
Which was always part of the one day, but.
So so we don't just screen kindergartners, we screen the first three years of their enrollment in the district?
Yes.
Well, we're only mandated.
Not screened.
We're only mandated.
To screen kindergarten.
Well, right, so so I guess my question is.
These are, these are, these are assessments, literacy.
These are assessments.
Yeah, these are literacy assessments. I'm not sure.
They've already mapped least, so it's not.
So then, do other districts do that as well? Is that, is that a unique Scarborough thing?
I'm not sure.
Do it this way? This feels weird. I don't know, I just, I've never seen, the way it's written up there, my first thought was, why are we spending two days re-screening first and second graders? But I understand the literacy piece. I guess I'm just wondering, is that, is that over complicating this or, I don't know.
Do you find big changes over the summer in those students from first to second to make it?
I mean, they have final assessments at the end of the prior year. And so, I mean, every once in a while, of course, there's kids that, you know, we have like a summer slide and that kind of thing. Um, so, but I think really the point is that teachers are getting to know kids individually. Our class sizes are, you know, in the twenty, nineteen, twenty. So to be able to meet every student individually before the very first day of school, get to know them, talk to their family. We've had a number of students that moved into Scarborough, um, over the summer at every school. Um, so you're, you're actually meeting families as well. So it's that, that relationship building and personal touch and and helping kids to acclimate, um, to where they're going to be, you know, every day for the next year is is also a part of the, um, that experience. Even though it's twenty, thirty minutes, it's important. Um, we don't get that until open house, so.
So I think that's really valuable, but just thinking about this from an equity standpoint, like, I can only imagine that all the teachers at Wentworth would also love to do that. I mean, I know these kids are little, but I mean, a third grader is little too.
You think the teachers of Wentworth would what, like to meet the families or?
Well, I'm just saying, like, if, I mean, I get that we have, we don't know kids who are coming into kindergarten. Like, it's so valuable for us to be able to, well, we have to screen them, but it's also valuable to be able to.
Do an entry level assessment.
Do an entry level assessment. Like, we don't, we can't say, hey, um, Mrs. Steele, what was Reed like in first grade? Like, can you give me some, you know what I mean? Like, we don't have that background data for any, or background information for any of those kindergarten kids, so. And I, I I hate saying that. I hate myself for saying this because I am a teen, but like.
Well, there's nothing expected of them doing that.
No, I I, right, that's, right. Like, my point is, like, if we are gonna allow for our first and second grade teachers to have that really nice, dedicated time to be able to do some assessments that they would normally have to do during the year and to make their students feel more comfortable, why aren't we doing that for the rest of the the elementary grades?
Ask to do that.
There are assessments that teachers need to do across the grade levels, absolutely.
Right, and so we're giving first and second grade teachers, like.
The additional time.
The additional time and we're not giving it to other teachers.
Well, I'm looking at it more from, not as we're giving it to other teachers as could we, could, I mean, potentially those kids are losing out on two, two instructional days.
I think you have to think about where K two kids are at as opposed to.
I couldn't hear you.
I think you have to think about where K two kids are at, what their level of independence and the time they may need to, especially in first grade, to kind of do some of those things and, um, it's a critical year.
I mean, giving an assessment to three through five has to be a little bit easier than assessing one, two, right?
I'm not saying that they shouldn't have that time and I think they probably should have.
No. No, I get that, but like.
Ask for that time, but it's, it's just a different beast, I think, at K two.
But you're drawing an arbitrary line, let's be honest. We're drawing an arbitrary line because of the way our district's set up.
I don't, I don't think anyone has drawn that line.
No, I'm, I'm saying we are. We're saying that we can do it for K one, two, because those are our primary grades.
Oh, I have a thing.
Right.
But like, in reality, K through six is elementary school and how much of a difference is there between second and third grade, first and second grade, third? You know what I mean? Like, we're drawing that line because of the way our district's set up.
So you're saying make those days assessments for everybody or take them away for one, two?
I think, I don't.
I think she's just calling out the discrepancy and arbitrary issue.
I'm just, I'm just saying. Right, I'm just raising an issue that I see as a.
Well, something you said a moment ago, I think, is really important. And and I thought of that when I saw this K one, two out there, I thought, oh, well, of course, there are students that move in and wanted to, we didn't have the benefit of having them as kindergartners. So having that assessment entry level, basically, you're maybe it's two years late. But to Hillary's point, I can see exactly what you're saying. I mean, why wouldn't other grades want to do that? To take a time to do that assessment. Something, conversation we've become very familiar with over the last year is about equity and time and outside the classroom for our, for our professionals.
And when those students come in at three, five and at middle school, usually the, um, the guidance counselor, and this happens at the high school, usually the guidance counselor or the instructional coach will be involved in assessing the student um, and reviewing the records to then, um, make a recommendation and work with the principal on a placement. K two does not have.
Students moving in.
For new students moving in. K two does not have a guidance counselor. K twos do not have guidance counselors to help out in that process. Um, and the instructional coaches are split across three different buildings. So there's a little bit less capacity there at K two in order to acclimate new students into the school. I think the principals do a lot of that work in meeting with the parents and assessing where students are. Sometimes I get called into that process. Um, sometimes the instructional coaches will do that. Or sometimes the principals will call on a particular grade level teacher to do some of that.
Why don't we have guidance counselors at that level?
It's been a budget, we had one person across three schools. I think it's a, um, an issue over the years where we had a reduction. We had one, but we were never able to build additional staffing given competing needs during budget time. That would indeed help us to move from a reactive to a proactive earlier intervention system.
Not an easy share between grades.
It's not.
No kidding.
It's not an easy share.
Yeah.
And just to, the point about do, the question was, do we take it away or do we add it for everybody? Um, taking it away for first and second grade, those are expected things that teachers do at the beginning of the year. Taking it away means that they would be away from their students for, at minimum, the first two weeks. So they would not have a full day of school. We don't have the internal coverage opportunities for all of our first and second grade teachers, um, to rotate through, um, how that would be screening. So they basically would not have a full day with their class for about two weeks into school. So it's a time.
Screen, you mean screening all the grade one, twos?
If they had to screen all twenty of their kids, but it was all the, doing assessments.
It took me kindergarten?
No, first and second grade.
First and second grades.
Yeah, but they needed to screen all twenty of their kids and.
Doing their literacy assessments, their teachers college inventories?
Because we would need to relieve them to be able to go do that. They would need release time, so we need to have coverage, which means we put together a schedule of who's gonna go when and the, it would take a long time.
But we do those assessments at the end of the year, right? So we're talking about the changes of the summer?
There are, yes. Um, at the three, five, it's a little bit easier for, um, building support staff to assist and cover a classroom while the teacher's doing that outside the door. That's the point around the third, fourth, fifth graders being a little bit more, um, independent and able to, um, focus on other things, um, while the teachers were doing a screening.
But that's compared to the school too.
Their first week of school too.
They're transitioning back to school too.
Given the differentiated levels of instruction that I know the kids get at K two, I would not be in support at all of removing those screening times for those students.
I don't, I don't think we should remove them either. However, I do think that it's inequitable.
Right, I was clear with that.
So the, so the bigger question then, I think, is how does our Wentworth staff and and professional staff feel about it?
Right. I would like to hear, I would like to hear some feedback on that before second reading of the calendar. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and this has really, I don't, I mean, you, you can speak to it on behalf of your staff, but it doesn't really have anything to do with kindergarten. I, I know a lot of teachers who, I mean, I know a lot of teachers and obviously I was a teacher, but like, one day of one staff day before school seems so intensely inadequate.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We can argue with that. I speak to that.
Yep, I'm just, I mean, I'm right, right?
Yeah, you're right.
So how can we alleviate that? Like, like, I'm looking at the staff days and maybe Monique, you can speak to this too, because I'm looking at the staff days and there's a random one on the ninth of October.
Well, it's not quite random.
Well, I don't mean random, I mean.
Districts also have that day, regardless of October.
Part of a common calendar.
Part of the common calendar.
Common calendar, okay, well, this, these are the things I want to know.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the third looks like a staff day, November third.
Well, November third is a staff day only for high school.
Oh, only for the high school, okay, so that's a, that's.
And only this year because of the election.
Yeah, okay.
And then.
That's fine, okay. And then the other one is the day before, no.
It's March twelve.
March twelve.
It's March twelve.
And that's another partner district common day that we have up until, we have not participated in in the past.
Okay.
But as we talked through the calendar this year, um, there is a lot of shared professional development opportunities that happen on that day, uh, that we're not able to fully participate in because we can't, um, get the number of substitutes that we would need for people to participate. And we also got feedback, um, that perhaps having a professional development day at the end of May is not the best timing for that. But I think, um, you know, you make a great point, Hillary, in terms of, um, we don't have a lot of staff development days in the teacher contract.
I know that.
Right?
I'm well aware. Um, what about the, the sixth, no, what if, what is the random Friday that we get off before a whole week of school?
It's usually.
Those days are a result of offsetting the time that teachers put in for.
April sixteenth?
Yeah.
Um, it's twice a year.
Right, it's for parent conferences, I know.
Right, it's a compensation day. And then in November, there is a date on the twenty fifth. That is the other flex day.
Those are the other.
So we have five, um, teacher workshop days in the calendar and two of them are flex days, um, as a result of conferences.
To compensate teachers for the additional time for teacher conferences.
Okay.
Monique, the screening for, um, assessment, excuse me, for grades one and two, um.
It's really, it's not really screening assessments, it's really our literacy assessments that the teachers do.
We should just call it assessments.
Assessments, yeah.
Assessments.
So the assessments for one and, grades one and two.
Yep.
You do it in the spring and then you do it again in the fall. Are you looking for, are you looking for changes over the summer or things that you might have missed in the first?
We want to inform instruction as closely to when instruction's gonna happen, so, yeah. Want those teachers to have, know where those kids are at.
So why do we do it in the spring then?
To see how far they've come during the year.
Growth.
Baseline, and then you go to the end of the year.
You're doing a core card at the end of the year.
And then my, and then you're, and then my kid knows which book box they get to go book shopping from, whether they're.
Whether they shop from that box.
What, for the summer?
M F.
No.
Well, no, so they, they have a level.
I do, I mean, can we just be clear that there are not only two assessments during the entire year?
Right.
Right, they're assessing kids.
Right, they're assessing kids all the time, but these are like, um.
More formal.
Benchmarks.
Well, they're benchmarks, yes, thank you, like.
Well, there are also assessments, for example, if students aren't yet reading or on their path to reading, there might be sound letter I D assessments, it might be, there may be sack high frequency words, checks on their vocabulary, but also reading inventories to get a sense of where students are in terms of instructional level or independent reading. And we want the students engaged in knowing where they are so they can set reading goals for themselves. So in the spring, you are reading goal this, and the teachers encourage students to read over the course of the summer. One thing I've learned about reading and growth and learning is it's never really linear. Students take jumps in their learning, sometimes they take step backwards, depending on how much, um, uh, reading they're exposed to over the course of the summer. But sometimes they can skip a level or two or three in just a couple of months. So it, it really is because their growth is not really predictable in some, you know. So that's why we do in the fall and the spring.
Thank you.
So does anyone have any ideas on how we can get an an additional day before school starts for our teachers? I mean, because it's not, they don't just get that day to go and sit up, I mean, they have the school district wide meeting and they have the, I mean.
I mean, September first, but I mean, you have grades three, six and nine there, but I I would imagine, I mean, I may be wrong about this, but a lot of the staff don't have students that day, right? I mean, there's only three grades.
Right, and that's another.
Well, in K one and two are.
But K one and two are there all day and they're meeting with parents all day.
Yeah.
Well, right, but.
Right, but the inequity, the inequity is that grades four, five, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve have an extra day when nobody else does.
That's right.
Yes.
So the staff, I can only speak for the middle school. I know that on that day, even though it's a sixth grade only day, our seventh and eighth grade teachers are allotted a certain amount of time with the sixth graders so that our sixth grade teachers can get planning time and release time so that they can work on other things too. So I know that there are deliberate, um, plans and it sounds like, um, this catch is nodding, but the high school does the same thing.
We try to share as well.
Yeah.
So like, at K one, two, that doesn't, they're with kids.
Yeah, I know that.
They're with kids, but they're also given scheduled time to do those assessments. The other grades aren't, so it kind of balances out, right?
Yeah. Staff are busy.
Right, well, yeah, they're, yeah.
Too busy.
I don't want this to come, yeah. I don't want the end result of this for anyone to think that we think people have free time on their hands because I know for a fact that they don't. I'm talking about inequity.
Right.
And equity structure. That, I mean, yeah. So I guess, I, I'd, I, I mean, me personally, I'd like to see that question answered before second reading. And I also, um, would like to hear if anybody has any ideas on how to get, uh, another day for our teachers. And I want to find out how much a day of school costs us if we were to add another day of school to the calendar. Oh, shoot, we can't do that because of the contract, never mind.
Yeah.
Last one you cross out.
Cross out that last note.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments about the calendar?
The only, um, piece that we've had some discussions about, I guess we can, we should bring it back to leadership council, is because of the snow days the past couple of years. There's some conversation, particularly K five, with the electronic report card to move the end of term trimester two to the twenty sixth as opposed to the nineteenth. And what that would do is provide sixty, term two would be sixty six days. And if some of those were snow days, then they would obviously be added on to the end of the year. Taking those five days away from the end of the year puts term three at fifty one days. So it might be a, um, might be something, um, that the board might be open to is switching that so that it would, um, allow for some more flexibility during. so that it would, um, allow for some more flexibility during that second trimester.
But aren't you then taking the same risk if there are any snow days or?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. It's more difficult at six, twelve, particularly high school to move that at all. Um, we, I know every year we have some discussions when we have those snow days, there isn't enough time. But because the high school schedule is tied into mid-year final exams and athletics, it's, it's a much more complicated schedule to shift. But that would not impact the five day piece.
So you would shift it for the entire district?
No, just the K five trimester.
Cause we're on trimester.
Right.
So I'm, I, it would make, you'd lengthen trimester two and then shorten.
Trimester three. But what?
With the idea of adding.
Kind of hedging your bet, hedging back.
Heding your bets that you're adding days.
Then they're actually gonna gain those days back on the other side.
Right.
Right.
I just had a question. This, um, so the first three days are K appointments. And then the fourth day, it says K is notified of placement in the open house. Are there also appointments that day?
Well, there, there could be if we have any, if we need it.
Yeah.
But mostly we're making, we're finalizing placement, notifying our parents, teachers are doing their final prep.
Yep.
Um, for kids because we're making those decisions and then we're, we're sending emails.
Okay.
Did they find they had time last year with that day? Cause I know they always make like next name tags and.
Yeah, that's what they were doing. We helped them, yeah, we kind of pre-planned with that my own bike, so they didn't have to do it all by themselves, but yeah.
Okay, um, I think with that, we will, uh, conclude our workshop for this evening. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we will take recess until seven o'clock and then we will resume for our business meeting.